I'm excited about this.
The meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, August 4th, 2025. I'd ask that you please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we have just been blessed and witnessed a very unique program about Batavia and its desires to improve itself in a very positive manner. We're ever thankful for the great group of citizens who showed up and offered input, and it speaks well to what Batavia makes us, a very special place in that we have so many people in this town who care and have compassion and a concern for the community and what we are all about, both today and in the future. And so tonight, I just wanted to officially thank that in this invocation because Batavia is a very unique community in a lot of respects because we have so many great contributing and eager people that want to do stuff that makes our town a good place to live. Tonight also, we want to remember those from our community who are serving in foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each one of these men and women as they go about their vital missions. Also tonight, we want to ask for understanding and direction and thinking by the city council as they act on the items before us, knowing that in the hearts and minds of each of them, they are here tonight to do what is always in the best interest of Batavia. And finally, we just want to ask for a special blessing on those from our community who are sick or infirmed, or not feeling well, and cannot be with us tonight, or otherwise confined to a hospital or a nursing home, and we just ask that a special blessing be shown to each and every one of them. We ask for all those blessings, and we move forward remembering that we are a very special place and how lucky we are to live in a town like Batavia. Amen. Who would like to do a Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, the city clerk, please call the roll.
Barazza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Malley absent.
Malone.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Farron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Lohman.
Here.
Peiper.
Here.
Farrinbach.
Here.
Anderson absent. Vocal singer.
Here.
Your Honor, 12 present, two absent.
So we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Item four is a reminder, if you're going to address us tonight, we'd ask that you come forward and use the podium and the microphone because this is all being recorded, and you need to speak into the microphone so that you can be heard on BATV. Moving to item five, items removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Anybody in the council having, they want to change or move? All right, moving then to item number six is the consent agenda. Alderman, Beck.
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. For approval, the building activity report for June 2025, the payroll fund totals for August 8th, 2025, in the amount of $1,102,282.21. The accounts payable total for August 4th is $3,287,378.53. The Cow minutes for July 1st, 2025, the city council minutes for July 7th, 2025, and July 21st, 2025. Resolution 2025-98-R authorizing change order number five with IHC Construction Companies, LLC, for the Phase 2A wastewater treatment plant improvements. Resolution 2025-102-R authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Batavia and the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 3436. Resolution 2025-99-R authorizing execution of Task Order 36 with GZA. Your Honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Motion, Alderman, Beck, and second, Malley. They approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, please call the roll.
Beck.
Hi.
Malone.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Farron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Peiper.
Aye.
Farrinbach.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
12 yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion for approval, the consent agenda is approved. Okay, moving to item number seven, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Does anybody in the audience wish to address us this evening? Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sheri Nightheart. My husband, Rick, we moved to Batavia about three years ago, and we had an experience with a contractor situation, and Laura Newman actually brought up our concerns about the lack of a contractor registration process here in the City of Batavia at last week's meeting. We heard your comments from the recording of that meeting, and we would like to just take this moment to discuss and point out what we believe were misguided statements made by the council members here. A contractor registration ordinance is the ones, at least we believe, would be beneficial to the city, would not be a list for public use. It would not be an endorsement by the city for any contractor. There is nothing in a contractor registration ordinance that says it is a preferred list. It's about creating requirements for contractors that the city deems necessary in order for them to work in Batavia with guardrails such as obtaining their insurance and bonding information. It was stated several times at last week's meeting that as long as this is happening to just one resident in Batavia, then this isn't really an issue for the city. There is no way that we are the only ones in Batavia with contractor issues. Contractor complaints are on a rise all across the country, and especially in states like Illinois where general contractors do not need to be licensed, only referrers and plumbers need to be licensed. It was twice stated at that meeting that the staff doesn't have time to deal with registering contractors, and that they have much better things to do than to maintain a list of contractors. That is disheartening for me to hear, because I know Batavia has a heart and wants to, you know, help out residents and businesses, but that didn't seem like a heartfelt statement. I mean, how can that statement even be made without the future knowledge of what it takes to implement such a program? It was brought up that the Chamber of Commerce should be the ones dealing with this and not the city. That sure, that doesn't really make any sense to me. I don't know what the Chamber of Commerce would achieve. They're here to do the job of promoting businesses and providing, you know, opportunities for businesses in the community, and they're not here to, you know, help with contractor permitting and making sure that they're following codes. And lastly, a comment was made that said that maybe this should be a voluntary registration process. Well, clearly, that's going to defeat an entire purpose of a registration when unscrupulous contractors come into our city, and they will certainly not be volunteering their information. The other thing I did notice, and I mentioned to Laura Newman that I know, and she mentioned it in the meeting, that 10 years ago, this was brought up in front of the city, and a thorough report was done by Scott Buwing, I don't know if I pronounced his name correctly, by the Community Development Director, and it was very thorough. You see, I highlighted a lot of information that he said, and I'm not sure if anyone from that meeting last week went and looked that up, but there's very insightful information here, and I'm not going to quote all of it this evening, but I encourage you to look up the meeting notes from January 3rd of 2016 to see the discussions that happened 10 years ago and why it was sort of tabled. And my husband is now here to speak about our personal situation, if that is something that you want to hear, what happened.
Thanks, Sheri. Yeah, Rick Nightheart, and so would you like to hear about our situation, or is that going to be a waste of time? Okay, so we hired a contractor. This contractor has been doing work since 2003. This contractor was based out of Batavia, now based out of a different city, and we were having a deck that was going to be redone. He came out, proceeded to start the work. About 75% into the work, he decided that he didn't want to finish the project. Why he didn't want to finish the project, we have our own opinions. One of mine is I think he didn't, he got in over his head, and he wasn't quite sure on how to finish our stairs. So we have stairs that are unsafe and not to code.
Unusable.
Pardon me?
And unusable.
And unusable. So what he did is he came to the city, this is what he told us, he came to the city and took his name off of our permit without our knowledge. Don't quite understand how a contractor can do that when he's working for us and he's working for the city. Not sure if he has some inside people that work here or what it is, but I don't appreciate what happened. We don't appreciate what happened, and that's why we feel we need contractor, some kind of contractor registration for the city. So we came from Elmhurst, we were in Elmhurst for 35 years. We moved here to Batavia three years ago. Today is when we closed on our house, and we came here because we knew that it was a smaller community, but a community that seemed to care about everybody, including the residents, along with their, all of their businesses, that they ensure are working to the best of everybody's ability that live here. So it was up to us to find a new contractor to finish the work. Well, we not only had a contractor leave, but we had a contractor now that we had to find. It was tough to find another contractor to do the work because we had a contractor now that had to finish what somebody didn't, didn't finish as they should have, along with correct a number of different issues that that contractor left behind with us. So that's going to cost us money, more money than what we intended, and we wanted to get this taken care of. We reached out to the contractor even after the contractor said he would walk, didn't want to talk to us. So we were lucky enough not to make a final payment, but that final payment was nothing compared to what we have to pay for now to fix the deck. It doesn't even compare. So about three weeks after he had walked, I was opening up the blinds in our house, and lo and behold, I look out the window, and down the street is going a pickup truck with a trailer on the back that looked awfully familiar. So I walked outside, looked down the street. This contractor now has a permit working six houses down from us. So here we are, we have a deck that's not completed. Somehow, this contractor was able to get another permit approved for a different job, six houses from our property ourselves. So along with that, talk about disheartening, now we know, every day, we see this guy driving by with his equipment to go work on another house while ours is sitting incomplete. So what we want to do is, we're going to do whatever it takes to have this ordinance be seriously considered by the city. We hope you will take that up and actually consider that. If it takes us getting a petition going and knocking on doors to inform our community as to what it will take, then consider it done. That's what we're going to do. Again, as Sheri said, last week's meeting really left us with a sad, sad feeling because it just seemed like there were many flippant comments made about contractors and how, well, there's only one that's having a problem, so maybe we don't need to address it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Before I go, I apologize, I was not here for the original talk. So where do you folks live?
721 Young.
721 Young Avenue.
Okay. You know, and I apologize, I wasn't here for that conversation. I mean, I just had my deck replaced, and my story very easily couldn't end up like yours. So it's definitely, I don't think it's uncommon. However, I will say, and I'm sure we'll have larger discussion later, I'm not sure, at least in my experience, if the city necessarily could have done anything to resolve it, because it definitely was with the contractor. I know at one point, we were talking about involving, finding a police report or what have you. Have you guys?
Not interested in doing that.
No, here's the situation, and this was, as again, if you go back to the notes from 2016, exactly what is stated in there is what we think should be proposed again now. Go back and hear what he brought up, because he brought up very valid points. He also had two lists, two pages worth of cities around here that have a registration process. Elmhurst had it too. It's not to police, it's to register and verify that they have insurance and that they have bonding. That's it. And then that's a collateral situation where the city has that information, not to mention, it'll make the people that, you know, are here to be fly-by-night contractors not want to even do business here. So there are several cities, Wheaton, West Chicago, Sugar Grove, Oakbrook Terrace, I mean, there's 2,000 people in Oakbrook Terrace, and they have a really good program. So it's not by population size, it's not, it just, do some research on it, we implore you to do that, because seriously, it's not going to be good. I mean, there is just too much going on. We all know what happened with the microburst here and people getting hail calls left and right, okay? Think about how many people may have gotten taken by contractors like that. If you're going to, you know, want permitted work done here in the city, I think it's something that you need to seriously consider, because I don't have any inkling that anyone would want to sue the city. We never, that never crossed our minds. We didn't know you guys didn't have a permitting process until after the fact. Shame on us for not calling the city, no clue at all, because we came from a city that had the registration program. So we didn't call the city.
Okay.
And we found out after the fact, especially when we were talking to our inspector, and he's like, there's nothing more we can do. I have to fail these stairs, they're not to code, they're not compliant, they probably should all be torn down, he didn't do them right. I'm like, well, what are we supposed to do? He goes, I don't know, you know, it's up to you. We have to, we're going to probably file a civil suit against him.
I apologize for interrupting you, so I make sure I'm clear on the situation. So you did not originally get a permit for the deck?
No, we did. We had a permit.
He did. He obtained the permit for us, and his name was on the permit.
Okay.
And then one day, he told us in writing that I've gone to the city and taken my name off of the permit.
Okay.
Without our knowledge.
Gotcha.
So don't quite understand how that could happen. To me, that permit does not belong to the contractor, that permit belongs to us, does it not? We live in the city, he's doing work for us, so I would think that permit belongs to the residents.
Okay.
I think you were going to raise your hand.
Yeah, is that possible?
So the permit that is in the system right now?
April 21st, something like that. You want the permit number?
I have it pulled up.
Okay. Yes, so, yep.
And that's?
The contractor's name is still on there.
Yeah, the contractor's name is still on there, so if he told you that he had it taken off? That might be a new contractor. I don't. T squared? No.
Contractor?
T squared is who is on the permit. Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's funny, he told us he took his name off the permit. How could that have happened?
I had brought in the new contractor's information as instructed by the city, and they said that they were going to put the new contractor's name on the permit, so clearly that wasn't taken care of either.
Nope.
There's another.
Oh, there is. Well, it's the same number.
They wouldn't change it.
It wasn't a brand-new permit. We were told that we will, they would just amend the permit that's there. That way, we wouldn't have to obtain another permit and pay for another permit because of the situation.
Are you showing two of them in there?
I have one question, and we've got this all out, and we've got some time to talk about it here for a bit. When they approved the permit that you got from the city, it was approved by an inspector that looked at that and said that this staircase would be okay, this deck layout fits within the envelope on the lot, all the things that would be answered by the city.
Correct.
And then your contractor didn't build what was on the approved permit.
Correct.
Okay, so I guess what I think is, it's not really the city's fault that that happened.
We're not saying it is.
Right, and I understand what you are asking for, and I think we'll probably have to revisit that. What I think is, especially when you state you have a signed letter that he removed his name from the permit, and those two things don't match because his name is still on the permit that was filed, that's one strike against him. Two is he didn't build what was on the plan, that's two strikes, and three, he's consistently lied to you.
Right.
And not to add, but four, to me, is now he has another permit, he probably has multiple permits, but he has another permit to do work six houses down from us while ours is left unfinished.
Right, and I think one of the answers for one of the questions I would have is, if we had a business registration like that and something happened with a permit, is one permit, one strike to be able to remove them from the list that we have in town, and we don't allow permits for them, because all that'll happen there is then the homeowner will go get the permit, and the contractor will do the work, and it won't be in the contractor's name. So that's what I've heard of other situations that have happened in the past with this.
Could you not, I'm sorry, could you not ensure that another permit is not issued until that first permit is cleared and completed per plan?
Again, then that becomes more that we have to track and have our staff do, and one of the things, I'm one of the people that was here back in 2016 when we discussed this, and you know, from my recollection of it and what I found, I don't know that what we would have in an ordinance as that would cover that situation. You know, if somebody came in, and yes, I know you lost money on it, but somebody came in and took a deposit and disappeared, those are two different situations. Granted, they're both money losses, and you know, I don't know that, at least in my mind, that we're ready to try to put that kind of system in that would preclude somebody from doing work here after one strike. That would be very difficult, I think, for us to all agree.
But what if he has, what if, we don't know his history, from what all we found out as far as referrals.
And the other thing is, he could apply here after he has 20 strikes in another community, and we have no way of finding him.
But that's exactly why you ask for insurance and bonding, so then we could, you know, put up, we could, you know, go after his bonding.
When you hired him as a contractor, did you ask for insurance and bonding?
Not at the time, that was a problem.
Okay, and granted, that's something that I've learned in the past with things I've had done, and where I felt like I was taken advantage of. That's one of those things that maybe with better education in our building department, we would have something that lists that when you, what do you look for when you pick a contractor?
Well, I understand that, but we also have the comfort of living in other city for 35 years that protected us, so I guess we got too comfortable from that. We thought Batavia would have offered that here, and clearly, we learned the hard way that Batavia doesn't.
Unfortunately, we didn't ask that question about the insurance and bonding, because there were reviews.
And referrals.
Very good reviews, very good referrals. This person has been doing, or this company has been doing this since 2003, as I mentioned. If he's been doing work since 2003, I would think that he would be reputable and reliable, and he would follow the plans as printed. That's a whole nother issue about not following plans, because we have pictures, if you'd like to see what the stairs look like. He was supposed to put a pad at the bottom of the stairs, plans clearly say four by four by six inches thick. He put a pad down there at the bottom of the stair, which happened to be one stair short, if you read the plans, so he didn't follow the plan there, and that pad that he put down was 13 inches by four feet. So we've got, we had a pad, we had a pad that was just under the last step. It was not 36 inches out, like it's supposed to be from the last step, and it wasn't four by four by six inches. Now, this is a contractor, as I said, he's told us, he told us, he's the basements, he does decks, look at my deck. He did a deck that was raised like ours, it looked immaculate. Now, my question is, is that really his deck, or did he pull it off of some website? So that's what concerns us.
Thank you. Can I make a suggestion that staff or that city council gets emailed that 2016 memo for us to review, and maybe this discussion can come on a future Cow meeting? And then I'm also curious, I mean, it sounds like staff has been working with this couple a little bit, is there anything that the city can do per that permit with the situation they're in at this time?
It is just a contractual matter of the, his failure to perform the services that he promised to them. It's really an independent issue between.
See, now, I beg to differ, I totally agree with that, but it's also not up to code. So does the city not have a responsibility to make sure that it is up to code?
We do, unfortunately, but that's.
And he failed the code. He failed it. So my, our situation is, he failed, so he needs to be held accountable.
It was completely unsafe, it's a deck, couldn't use it, I have grandchildren, had to warn them, do not go down those stairs, I had to block off the stairs, tried to use the deck for the summer without going down those stairs. It's completely unsafe. I mean, I'm sorry, a guy working like that and flippantly just walking away, because, and we know exactly why, because he had way too many jobs on his, he told us the amount of jobs he had. He had plenty of jobs here in Batavia and other cities. He was too overloaded, and he did not want, and I think he knew he did the stairs wrong, and he didn't want to fix them, and he figured he'd rather lose the last payment than have to redo it all over again.
And unfortunately, the last payment wasn't a lot, so we lost out on a lot of that. He also did not leave materials. We had to go out and buy our own railings, we had to go out and buy our own posts, we had to go out and buy our own finishing fascia, so he left none of the materials for us, and he walked. So he not only walked without completing the job, he walked away without leaving the materials that needed to be used to complete the job.
If anything comes of this, I mean, as far as you guys looking at that, we would be more than happy to be involved in coming back and listening to what you guys discuss and let us know, but I will do anything to make sure that this gentleman, this company does not do any like work like this again. I mean, by looking at it, our contractor, I mean, our contractor inspector said, this is horrible work, it doesn't even look, our deck turned out fine, he passed the inspection. I think he got rushed and he just wanted out, but that's not an option when you make a mistake. I'm sorry, it's not an option. You got to stay committed to, I mean, if you've been in the business that long, I don't know where he feels the right that he can just walk away. So thank you for your time.
Vocal singer.
I would also want to read the information from the meeting in 2016, and would be in favor of bringing this up for a further discussion at a later time. I have a friend who a similar thing happened to in Batavia, and I wonder, my hunches might have been the same person, that job was started, and then contractor left, they had to find somebody else to finish it, it wasn't as precarious of a situation, but it was the same story, and.
Were you here at the committee of the whole last week? You must not have been, because.
I was here, yeah.
Oh, okay, because that wasn't brought up. What was brought up was, it sounds like a one-off, I don't think we have to go after a one-off.
At listening, I didn't think of it until I was hearing you guys.
Okay.
Get in detail of your situation.
No problem, we understand.
I have heard this story before, and if other communities have something like this that we can look at.
I've had some experiences, not this severe, but I could very easily have seen a trend there, if I didn't have some like safeguards in place, right, which I did fortunately. So yeah, we'll bring it back up.
Okay.
And well, and then I was going to show, well, she put it away, and then I walked in here tonight, and lo and behold, there's a brochure sitting on the counter talking about avoiding contractor scams. So somebody is aware of it here, because this is for seniors, which I'll be next year, but this applies to everybody, not only seniors, and I wanted to bring that to your attention too, please.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down tonight, and we will continue to take a look at this.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
All right, I guess that concludes our agenda conversations. Any other matters from the public? All right, then, moving to regular agenda, item 8.1, appointment of Kate Kuno to the Batavia Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on June 1st, 2028, and I hurried up and put this one on the agenda, because quite, right now, the Plan Commission's running it, no extra people on the, and we need somebody in case somebody can't show up. And so I called her, as some of you may remember, she ran for alderman in the sixth ward last time and was defeated, but I met with her and had some nice conversations with her and whatever, I think she's got a lot to offer, and so I would ask that you approve her, because we need to get another person on the Plan Commission ASAP. Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
Your Honor, if you could send us out a list of open commission posts that we have, because I have had a couple people contact me when this came out, and we talked about before that we have some other openings, so we can try and find some people to fill those.
We really got, we have two more on the Plan Commission right now, and we have one on the Historic Preservation Commission, and we've got, I know a good candidate for that kind of sitting in the wings, and we haven't had a chance yet to bring her in and have a conversation with her, and that's all I'm trying to wait to do, but we will get this, because we really need these boards up and running. This Plan Commission thing ended up being kind of a unique little situation in the fact that I believe everybody on the east side that was on the Plan Commission all left the Plan Commission, so we didn't have anybody on the east side on the Plan Commission. And it's always been kind of a city idea, I'll call it, going back long before I was mayor, and that's a long time ago now, that they always tried to split the Plan Commission up so there is. up so there is X number on both sides of the river, so that it's not just one side of the river is running the Plan Commission.
Representation. That's a brilliant idea.
Right, right. So anyway, that's one of the, when I, when I was told that Kate was available, and that's the reason I called her and said, would you, she said, yes, I would. So I said, well, I'll put you on the agenda for tonight's meeting, because we, we're running as close right now till we get at least one more on there, so.
I've noticed some canceled meetings, and that's why I brought it up.
Right. Kirk, call the role on the motion.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Farenbach.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion's approved. Thank you very much. All right, moving then to item 8.2, the Chamber of Commerce, and their president and CEO, Margaret, is here to talk with us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I'm always grateful to be able to share what's going on with the chamber. We have a full lineup of chamber hosted events in August. On August 8, we continue to offer our not-for-profit forum, which builds collaboration between our not-for-profit leaders. On August 7, at noon, we have our Out to Lunch with the Chamber Eats program at El Taco Grande. We have been featuring different restaurants each month. The restaurants have been coming back, saying how much they love the attention, the marketing and promotion we're giving them, and that they're getting new customers coming in. So that's a fun, exciting promotion that we're offering, and the gift certificate winners have come to pick up their gift certificates and are overjoyed. So really been a fun program, so come join us at El Taco Grande at noon on August 7. Later that afternoon, we have a ribbon cutting for Carney Homes, KW Inspire Realty. We have a, on the same day, at 1:00 PM, an educational seminar about impact of the tax HR1 bill on business. It's the big, beautiful bill that we've been hearing about. We decided to do an educational program for our businesses to talk about the timely insights of local employers and nonprofits and the impact of that bill. It's on Zoom, so you could register for that online. On August 13, we continue to have our morning networking, Coffee and Commerce. This time it'll be at Urban Apothecary, so join us to get to know the business owners and see new and familiar faces. On August 14, we have our multi-chamber progressive luncheon hosted by the Batavia Women in Business to give lots of networking opportunities. We're partnering with 24 chambers, so it's a pretty large event. It will be, the registration closes tomorrow for that one, if you're interested. On August 20, we have our networking in the evening at Sturdy Shelter. It's our after-hours connection and engagement opportunity for our members and potential members, anybody's welcome to join us. Each month, we always spotlight a charity, and we're spotlighting the League of Women Voters of Central King County, so if you want to know more about them, come join us. On August 26, we are doing the Employee Handbook webinar, HR 101. We know that employers really need to have employee handbooks, so we're giving educational opportunities about that at no charge. And then on August 27, at 4:00 PM, we're doing a ribbon cutting at Pulte Homes. You know the new homes that are being built along Van Norwick, the, and Wilson. They are going to give tours, too, to the townhomes and the single-family homes, so definitely come join us for that. I know you'll want to be a part of it. All event details can be found on our website, of course, bataviacamber.org. I wanted to mention that on September 23, at 5:30, I sent out an e-vite to the community or the council. So at Windmill Grill, the chamber's hosting an alderman meet and greet to bring together our board members from both the chamber and Batavia Main Street, along with our city's aldermen and key staff. So thanks for joining us. Please look for that e-vite if you have not responded. It's a great opportunity for the leaders in our organizations to come together and get to know each other. We are now accepting nominations for our Donna Delasasi Award winner. This is the Chamber Member of the Year Award that we give out, named after Donna Delasasi, who was the chamber exec for 16 years and did a lot for Batavia. So if you know a chamber member who's made a meaningful difference in the community, please submit a letter of nomination to my email, margaret@bataviacamber.org. We will be celebrating the Donna Delasasi Award winner and the Georgine Kauff O'Dwyer Ambassador of the Year and our Membership Milestones winners at Chamber Chairs on October 2nd, so mark your calendar for that. It'll be at Grey Knowledge again. It was a lot of fun last year. I want to announce that, new and exciting, we can accept orders for Chamber Bucks online. So if you want to streamline the process of ordering Chamber Bucks, you still have to come into the office to pick them up, but you can get the payment done ahead and just sweep in, pick up your Chamber Bucks, and keep running. As you know, the program, the Chamber Bucks program is a loss for the chamber. We fully fund it. We absorb the cost because we know it is such an important program for our community to help our businesses, and our residents love it. So please continue to support that program and keep our money local. I know that it was talked about, that you're considering, you know, vetting businesses. I do want to say, I believe your comment last week about sending them through, or people sending them to the chamber is a good, valid idea. It's because we do meet with all of our members individually. We get to know them, we help vet them. Of course, it is said that, you know, I can't turn a member away legally. If they want to join the chamber, they can join the chamber. I can't, I can't pick and choose members. But we take the time to learn about each business, understand their service, and we build a relationship. The level of engagement that helps ensure our membership reflects businesses that are invested in our community across the county, across country, I mean. Chamber membership is widely recognized as a signal of credibility, professionalism, and trustworthiness, and this is true in Batavia. Most unethical or short-term operations tend to avoid chambers altogether. They're not looking for visibility, accountability, or community connection. Encouraging residents to start with the chamber is a smart way to guide them toward businesses that have demonstrated a genuine commitment and investment in Batavia. This focus on trust and accountability directly supports the broader mission of the chamber. Beyond serving as a resource for reputable businesses, we are continually working to strengthen Batavia's economic vitality through programming, partnering, and connection. We remain grateful for the partnership with the city and with your ongoing support of our mission. So now I would like to introduce an exemplary member of our chamber, Steve Boji from Boji Bikes. He offers a full-service bike, e-bike shop down the street here, offering rentals and sales and tours in downtown Batavia. He's built quite a destination here, so I want to invite you up, Steve, and tell us more about your business. Thanks.
Thanks, Margaret.
You're welcome.
I feel like I was just here last month. Because e-bikes are popular, and they've been growing in popular every year, more popular every year, and as a result, so it's our business, largely thanks to Batavia being a bike town. We focus on e-bike sales, which is matchmaking. Everyone in the room might get a slightly different bike. That's kind of the whole thing we do here, is find the right tool for what you want to do. After that, you're going to need service from time to time, flat tires, annual maintenance, so we're here for all that. Along the way, the public outcry, can we rent bikes? So we started doing that. Now we're doing guided tours, but the big thing we do is focus on having a wide variety to overcome every physical limitation, anyone's specific needs. And yeah, there's a, I don't know, a million ways you could talk about e-bikes, but they are popular, and I try to summarize a lot of that on that flyer I gave you, so I don't bore you while I'm up here. But it's pictures of stuff that sells well on the front, and you'll see a lot of that in the community, because we do sell a decent amount of bikes. But in the back is questions people always ask. How much? How legal? Do you need insurance? Is it exercise? And then they see me selling it. It's like, isn't that really exercise? But I promise it is, it's a good time, and it's a really good thing for, I call it the great equalizer. You could take the fit person, the overweight person, the person missing a limb, and we can all ride together. And my heart is in doing that, and Batavia has made that very easy. Started with 21, when we got our first keys to the space, the mayor gave a nice little speech there about the interchange and everything here, and we've only seen more and more people come down, even out-of-staters come check out our shop. So when Margaret said, hey, you get to come up and talk, it isn't just about the regulations and everything, it's about saying that, you know, thank you, Batavia, for being a great place for us, and we try to give back and do as many things as we can for the community. It's also partly why I enticed you, there's a couple bonus passes in there, in case you guys want to come ride bikes, and if you just know someone that might need to learn, pass them off to them. And then because I was here last month talking about safety, I might have ran out of them, but there's a bike safety quiz somewhere in there, too. There's four quizzes, if you follow the link, and what I was proposing last time was, maybe we come up with something our own that's a little bit more pointed towards the e-bikes to educate the youthful e-bike riders. But that's pretty much it. Boji Bikes does sales, service, rentals, and anything e-bike related. And I just wondered if you guys had any questions for me?
Can you make everybody that buys one pass the test here?
I don't make them pass the test, but we offer it, and we actually have little pamphlet versions, too, so they can read them while they're there.
I'd love to see something set up with the school district, or the park district, or both.
Yeah.
To try to do that, the night out that we do, the other things that happen in the city that you can be connected with to help educate people, both in their car and on the bike especially. After we had that meeting a month ago, leaving here, two people I saw on electric bikes, and one was on an electric scooter. Bike had a helmet with a light on it and a light on his back. The other kid that was on the scooter down the sidewalk, 15 miles an hour, nothing but a black hoodie. You know, and just those simple things like that, so they can be seen. If I wouldn't have really looked twice, I probably would have hit the one going across 31.
You're not alone, and I see things, too, every which way I look, and that's where originally, the only way I get to educate is if you come in through the store. If I could get in front of you, and actually, we go on a bike ride, I do education while we're out there. How do we encourage the rest? Well, I think you hit on that, right? School district, park district, maybe make it a requirement. If you want to ride your e-bike or e-scooter in Batavia, you got to pass a basic knowledge test. That's, before we got into e-bikes, it was ATVs, and we couldn't do them here in Illinois, so we went up to Wisconsin. First thing you have to do is pass the test and pay 35 bucks. So I'm on that, and that's actually why I handed out the quizzes here, because last month, that was pretty much on my mind to start with that as the foundation and keep adding to it. And I would love to do that and be part of distributing the information.
Vocal singer?
Thanks for all this information and the free Boji Bike Ride, that's awesome. Have you ever gone to the schools in Batavia to talk about bike safety?
Have not. I have been tunnel visioned into the business, but I think largely thanks to the chamber's involvement, I get to see the people at the park district and the people at the school. And I think we can ask if there's a way to do that, you know?
Yeah.
I don't want it to feel like it's dare, you know? It's not a bad thing. But an opportunity to, hey, here's resources that you can do.
Especially at the middle school level, I think.
Yeah, for sure.
That would be wonderful. Yeah, thank you.
Beck?
It's state law now, that all third through fifth, for sure, and I'm trying to remember, I can go into my files here. It's state law, every year, they're getting bike and pedestrian safety instruction in school every single year. It's largely baked into the gym time, and they take walks, and they learn the different ways. Joanne Spitz and I helped create the curriculum for it back in 2015, so it's been around for a while.
It would be with the advent of the scooters, the bikes, everything that's silent, that people aren't aware of, especially when you're pedestrian, sharing the same space. I think it would be really good to have some real-world, you know, knowledge of just at least letting them know that they need to be seen or they need to be heard when they're out there, before somebody gets hit.
I'm on board.
I just want to say, it's funny we bring this up, and I really am impressed with your business and the number of bikes that I see. I have, over the last couple of weeks, gotten a couple of calls, though, from people that want to know, I got hit by this bike, who's, who's going to, who's insured, who's insuring me? And I don't think there's any requirement that these bikes have to be insured. Am I right on that?
Currently, I don't think you are required to insure your bicycle, and the stuff we sell, the class one, two, and three electric bicycles, usually fall under bicycle, under the eyes of the law, they're not motor vehicles. The stuff that they've been cracking down on in each town has been the high-powered stuff, excessive power, excessive speeds. You should have insurance on that legally, but those things usually don't have VIN numbers because I don't think they're road-ready, which is why there's the whole uproar. But some people do personally insure their stuff, but it's not, it's usually from theft and loss, it's not from liability. So I haven't seen that yet, and if someone was hit by a bike, they should probably file a police report and figure out who actually done it, so they have someone to come knocking for. But we'd be a resource for sending them our way if, here's a picture of the guy and his bike, oh yeah, we know who he is. I don't know if that's a good thing, but, you know, we try to take good records, you know?
I know other mayors and other towns are having this same conversation with, especially as you mentioned, those high-speed bikes that are apparently exceeding the requirements or whatever we want to call it that's on bicycles. So that's out there, and there's a lot of people that are now, you know, bringing that up. Do we have insurance on these bicycles? And I, you know, we, the city, don't have any insurance, and I guess if some kid riding a bike hit somebody, I suppose the parents would be the one that would go back on to.
Yeah, I consider this time the Wild West of e-bikes, because it's going to get figured out. We're going to have a town have a case, and then wherever another town copy the end result. And education is the only way to really get in front of it. We tell people when they come through the store, they say, oh, I want to go X amount of miles an hour. We're like, well, that's not what these are. Do you want to be on a bicycle or a moped? At some point, you get to that class four moped style, and then class five would be the same as a motorcycle. They're talking, you know, 50, 60 mile an hour speeds. Nothing like that here at Boji Bikes right outside, but they are in the market, and you see kids in town with them. And the parents don't even realize that you send them up for failure by they don't know how to follow the rules of the road, they don't have insurance on this thing. I don't know, it's up to you, I think, to tell us if we're going to be in front of it or wait for something to happen, but I do see both what Alan mentioned, the types of bikes that you mentioned, I see them out there. We are a long trail that people come through, and there are people pushing that.
Right, you know, I just share that with you for your betterment of information, that there are people asking questions about liability on these bikes, and especially people who buy bikes for kids that are kind of exceeding the standards that you're talking about.
Well, thank you for that.
Kevin's got his hand up. Kevin, did you want to comment?
I just wanted to correct something I said.
It's actually K through eight that are required, and it was 2018. I knew I was pregnant, I didn't know which kid it was, so I said 2015, it was 2018.
Hold on, Malone, did you have something you wanted to ask? Turn your hand on the screen down.
Muted or not.
Maybe he had to go someplace.
I think Kevin's been in the shop before. I think he's ridden bikes at least once.
Will you hear me?
Oh, there we are. There we go.
Go ahead.
My headphones must have not worked. Thank you for your patience, and also thank you so much for coming today. You know, first, I think your business is wonderful. I had the opportunity to head out and drive out one of your cargo e-bikes, and it was a blast. A six-year-old son loved sitting on the back. It was Rad Wagon IV. I'm still trying to talk my wife into letting us buy it. It was wonderful. I also want to thank you for being such a great resource for this town. I think this shows the great business community that the chamber fosters. You're here to speak about your business, and you've done a wonderful job of doing that, and you've proved yourself a resource in how we can, and this new technology, I think it's a great thing to have these types of businesses. So I just wanted to kind of turn the focus back on you just a little bit here, and sort middle-aged kids, and how is going to you better than hopping on Amazon or the internet to buy an e-bike?
Thanks for the layup of a question, Kevin, because we get to put hands on and get the actual information in front of the parents. The kids will tell you one thing, I want a dirt bike, Timmy's got a dirt bike. And yeah, dirt bikes are cool, but that's not what you should be on to legally ride. And the parents usually side with us, they're like, oh, thank you so much for telling us about this. See, Rob, you know, you really can't go over 20 miles an hour, which is usually the rules for the kids. Class 1 and 2 is okay, class 3, you need to be 16. And what we do is, we also have other safety features programmed in the bike that we can sometimes set for the parents. Hey, the top speed was set to 7 miles an hour, you cannot exceed that. And sometimes we do that for training them, and also, I touched on a little bit earlier, but because we are on this beautiful Fox River Trail, and the Fox River Trail has their own rules, I use the opportunity to teach best practices, announcing when you're passing, stopping in a moment of, hey, I might be able to zip through there, but I probably shouldn't, I'll scare somebody. We take the opportunity to really drill it into the kids. I was a safety person before I opened a bike shop, so I like to call myself Safety Steve sometime, and I will annoy customers with best practices and things like that. But usually, it's the parents agree, hey, he doesn't need to be on that big old thing he showed me on his phone.
Any other questions? Well, we thank you for coming down.
Yeah, well, thanks for having me, I'm located right out here, if you don't know where we are, and you can holler at us on our website at bojibikes.com, or, you know, give us a call, so we'll see you next time.
Thanks for having you in town, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we got done with the chamber, going to the City Council updates, the Administrators' report, Laura?
Thank you, Mayor. We continue to work with the Batavia Environmental Commission on their proposal to install a natural species garden to complement the Art of the Fox display on the east side of the government center. We've included Main Street in the conversation, since the placement of the garden could have a significant impact on their signature fundraising event cocktails in the park. So we plan to have an onsite meeting with everyone early next week, prior to the next BEC monthly meeting, and hope to come to a consensus, and then bring a final proposal back to City Council. We have created a data center information page on our current website, and you can find that if you Google for, I'm sorry, if you just use the search for City of Batavia Data Center Project. The current draft of the South River Street Corridor Plan has been posted to the project's website page, which is batavia-aisle-south-river-street-corridor-plan. It's a long, but you can find it on our website, too, just by searching for the South River Street Corridor Plan. We're going to do an outreach event at the August 23 Farmers Market, and it's the goal, with the goal of getting opinions from residents in, you know, a setting that's outside of a meeting here at City Hall. And we'll also be working on scheduling another event in the corridor in August, and advertising for these events will be on social media and on our website. There are a lot of public works projects going on these days, so I just want to give you an update on some of those that may impact folks around town. On Route 31 between Wilson and Houston Street, the city will be removing the brick pavers that keep crumbling over time and creating tripping hazards, and we're going to replace that with concrete, which should be safer and more durable for the future. We've communicated with all of the businesses along there, and we will work with them on any access issues as needed. Also, paving will start, is starting this week for McKee and Van Nordwick, and the project is still on track to be completed prior to the start of school. Last week, there was a significant water main break on Main Street, you know, the West Side Fire Station, and all of that has been repaired. And also, we are having to do some rerouting of the bike path adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant, this time because we are bringing all of the new services online, there's a need for a sanitary bypass, which will mean the sewer has to be laid over the ground on the bike path. And so therefore, for a few days, we're going to be using the same detour route for bicycling around that area, as was done during construction of the project. The Police Department, on this past Saturday, had a police officer testing process. I'm incredibly happy to say that we received 157 applications for that test, which is really good these days, and just is a testament to the caliber of departments that candidates perceive the Batavia Police Department to be, so kudos to them. And then I also wanted to mention, Rahat Bari is here today, he is going to be leaving the city of Batavia at the end of the week to pursue a new opportunity, but I just wanted to say what an incredible contribution that Rahat has made to the city over the years, leading many incredibly significant millions of dollar road projects for us. With regard to Prairie and Wilson Street, due to the length of time that that project took, we found ourselves toward the end on the short end in terms of funding, and Rahat relentlessly pursued getting us additional funding to be able to complete that project. So as, I'm sure, as he looks around this town, he has so much to be proud of in the projects that he led that will be serving our community for years to come, so Rahat, I'd like to thank you. And that's all I have, unless somebody has questions for me? Thank you.
All right, do we have other business?
Your Honor, it is August, and we are less than a month away from the start of football season. Just wanted to give a shout out for BATV's coverage this year. We're getting ready to put together sponsorships that are available to purchase for the entire season or any single game. They include replay sponsor, quarterly logos, business organization reads, trivia, and more. And trivia is the fun one, because Dave gets to stump me every game, because I can't remember last year versus 12 years ago, or now this will be my 20th season doing this. So it's going to be a lot of fun this year, they've got a really good team, look forward to a lot of really good games this year. So when you can't catch it, you can see it on BATV, and if you want to sponsor it, the contact information here would be either to Andrew at mybatv.com, or info at mybatv.com, or you can call 630-454-4584. So lots of opportunities for that, and it's always great to have businesses in town or people in town that want to sponsor a game or more during the season.
Paul McBeck?
Yeah, in regards to, just a quick note on just our committee openings, not a lot of people have time to serve on City Council, and simply the commitment's too great, you know, they're meeting once a week. A lot of people would like to serve in a committee, right? Unfortunately, we don't post our committee openings ahead of time, so a lot of times, people will be like, well, wait, I would have applied for that, or would have liked to have tried out city government, if I knew there was an opportunity to apply. And I know I had a couple of people reach out, where they were like, I didn't realize there was an opening on the Planning Commission, right? So it'd be nice if we could, and what I, I'm a firm believer in optics matter, you know, last thing I want is somebody to come back to say we're like gatekeeping or something, but I know we're not, right? So just a simple, like, simple ask of just, hey, before we fill a committee slot, let's just put on a notice, you know, just throw an alert, say, hey, we have these seats open, people can apply for it, right? Obviously, you know, we're going to, we're always going to pick the person who's most qualified for the position, who could probably do the best job for Batavia, but optics matter, and I hate to give a wrong impression.
I think the past few years, we've literally had an open position on just about every commission we have, except for maybe the Environmental Commission or the Act of Transportation. I think some of them are more interesting, or it's like you need to find the right people that really want to, you know, dive into everything that is entailed on a couple of those. Historic preservation being one, you know, that's somewhat specialized, and somebody really has to have interest in that, to try to, you know, give it the time that it's needed, and I don't have a problem with us trying to get that out there, I just feel like we're always doing that, we're always having turnover in a lot of those commission positions.
And we do put out a lot of alerts, it's one of those things where, until you ask, you just don't know what's out there, right? And that's where I'm coming from, so.
And sometimes we turn them into council members.
I would just like to add that, I know from being a staff liaison in our department, representing a couple of those commissions, one of the newest members of the Environmental Commission started by just going and attending meetings, so the meetings are always open, the agendas are posted on the website, so if people are interested, they're more than welcome to sit in on the meetings, participate as a non-voting member, and then the people that are on the commission also kind of get a say as to who may be a good person, or if they know anybody, so it's a good way for them to test the waters and try it out.
Any other comments? Under the Mayor's report, I've got a couple stories I'd just like to share very quickly. As you all know, when you're the mayor, you're kind of the object of the city, and most people kind of know who you are. So you get asked, or yelled at, or whatever, with some regularity about different stuff. In this past week, I had two very interesting situations. Number one, I was over at McDonald's one morning, having a cup of coffee, and a friend of mine, I would call her a friend, walks in, and she's got her laptop computer with her, and she lays the laptop down, and she says, Jeff, I just want to show you what's on the computer right now. She says, there's a whole series of things on this page about a pole that's been broken on South River Street, and it's tied to another pole, and people are criticizing the city because you can't get it fixed. And I said, well, I am familiar with that situation, and the pole was, I don't even think it's our pole, I think it's Commonwealth Edison's pole that's being held up there, because some of their lines got damaged by the storm that went through, and we're waiting for Edison to come back in here and do it. So she shows me, and there was a lot of uninformed people making comments about this on Facebook, some of you, I'm sure, may have seen this thing, it was quite the piece of work on their computer about the South River Street pole, and I just wanted everybody to know that this public work staff is working on it, and in cooperation with Edison, it's going to get fixed as quickly as it possibly can, but we, it's not all our wire hanging up there, I guess is what I need to say, and everybody needs to understand that. And the other one, I was at the, I generally try to go over on Saturday morning and walk the, a little party we have on South, North River Street, and this past one, I probably was confronted by three or four people, who all told me, I'm never over by HC Storm School, and I'm just worried as heck that that school's going to open and the road's not going to be finished out front. And so I've talked with Laura and this public work staff, and I believe I can say that the street is going to be fixed and open by the time school, and I think school begins a week from Thursday, the 14th. So that's the date, and so I'm assuming Pulte, who's maybe one that's on the hook to do some of this work, I assume we're talking with them that we need to get that street movable over there? Thank you. I just wanted that out, that the city is not ignoring that, and that we are going to have that street open, because there's a whole bunch of, I'll call them, new parents in town that have just bought into that area, and they're all concerned that the street wasn't going to be done, and whatever, so.
We're interested that the sidewalks get done. We got all the stuff on Republic Road done, and that looks great over there. So hopefully, from that, and the new sidewalks that are now available in that area, we'll have less cars, try and drop people off at school, I can hope.
That's the busy one. So those are the two. The other thing I was going to share with you is, the Chamber's asked me to do the annual Mayor's Report in November, I guess we're up at the homestead again, and this year, I'm going to share my report, the school district's going to talk for 10 minutes, and the park district's going to talk for 10 minutes, and the library's going to talk for 10 minutes, and I'm supposed to talk for 20. But the others are, so it won't all be me, so if you want to come, you don't have to worry about, you have to sit there and listen to me for 50 minutes. But what I wanted to share with you is, I'm going to do this year's program a little bit different. I've got our city staff, who we do have drone planes, and we're going to go up in the air over Batavia, and we're going to do, my program's going to be Batavia by drone, and we're going to talk about different things that are happening. One of the things I wanted to share with folks is out there on Nelson's Lake at Main Street, the county has now bought 1,641 acres out there in the field, and that will be one of the largest forest reserves in Kane County when they get that done, but we're going to drone that, so it'll give everybody an idea of how big that is. And also, we're going to get down on South Kirk Road and look at the Batavia Commons, which is the 242 new attached townhomes that have been built down there, but that's immediately adjacent to the city of Aurora, and then included in that is the casino. So the casino is in the Batavia School District, so I just wanted to kind of explain to everybody, there's a lot of Batavia and a lot of this stuff that's now unfolding itself, and we're going to do it all by the air this time, so if you'd like to come to the program, the Chamber will be selling the tickets pretty soon, but it's a lot to talk about, and I'm very proud of stuff that's going on. And I just want to also commend the Batavia Park District for the work they've done over here on, I'll call it now the new office building that they've put together, because they took the old office building, it was the law offices and doctors' offices, and have totally converted the thing. They got a beautiful second floor area that has windows that look toward the Depot Pond, and that's going to be a very nice setting. The only problem with the new building is, is the Depot Pond, the water's dead in the water there, it's not moving, and I'm going to be proposing to the park district that, you know, we've done this before, we need to get the pumps running in the Depot Pond area again, and start moving that water around, so we don't have all that dead water appearance up there that we've got, because that's a beautiful sight, looking out there's windows, once we get that water looking like it's water and not some kind of a pond of mud sitting there. So Batavia's got a lot to be proud of, and a lot of things going on, and so I just wanted to make note that we're kind of trying to fine-tune many of these moments and places, and I just want to share with you, the city staff has been very dynamic and supportive on a lot of stuff we've done, and we're very, I'm very pleased with all the good work that's being done by the city staff and our departments, because we really have had some really interesting things. I might note that I think we're heading for more record years in both the fire and police departments. This past week, the Batavia Fire Department exceeded over 3,000 calls we've already had in Batavia this year. Last year, we ended the year with 5,383, and I'm not so sure we aren't going to break that record with where we're going this year, because the ambulance business is just off the charts, as far as all the senior living communities we now have, that's bringing in a big demand for our ambulances, and talk about something I get nice compliments about, it's the ambulance service. And certainly, the other thing I've had, I was to a Legion meeting Saturday morning, and they wanted to talk about the Batavia Police Department, and what they felt had been the sudden occurrence of higher visibility of it, that they're seeing, they wanted to know how many more we do have. I said, well, we've added a few, and they wanted to know, telling me about how it's so good to see, because there's some sentiment that Batavia is kind of a target for the bad guys to want to wander in here and see if they can find a car they can jump into and steal stuff out of, or whatever have you, but by having the high visibility and the presence of the Batavia Police with well-marked cars, everybody thinks that's doing something very good. So we're getting a lot of pats on the back for both the police and fire departments, as well as the public work, so it's all good stuff, and I just want to thank each one of you on the council for all you're doing to keep it this way, because we do have a big list of stuff going on here, and it's unlike probably never before, but it's good stuff, so. With that, I guess I would call for adjournment.
All in favor?